All right, we will call to order the informational presentation on the 50-piece rule. We have a number of Alders virtually and some in the room as well. And this is just a presentation by our city attorney. So Attorney Hauston handed it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. So we're just going to run through the statutory 50-piece rule and some other campaign restrictions as reminders for Alders. The campaign period, of course, starts December 1st, which is the first date that nomination papers can be taken out for the spring election. So hopefully my PowerPoint will show up here. It was showing up earlier. Yeah, we had it earlier. One second. I'm not seeing anything where I need to share my screen. Kimberly, if I need to do something different, could you shoot me a message?
Oh, there it is.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So the 50-piece rule is a... Yeah?
Are you showing it to me?
It's...I'm plugged in through the HDMI.
That's the problem. Why don't you...
Tell me next.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, so the first slide just covers the statute, which is Section 11.1205. And this is a statute which simply states that any incumbent who is a candidate cannot use public funds for the cost of materials. Okay, thank you. Or distribution for 50 or more pieces of substantial identical material from December 1st until the day after the spring election. This prohibition ends on the day after the spring primary for any incumbent who does not...is not nominated at the spring primary. There are...
Who are controlling?
Okay, thank you. It's just not showing up on the screen.
It's on the next page on his computer.
I'm on my computer. So the prohibition does not apply to the use of public funds in a couple of specific cases. One is if Alders are responding to specific inquiries from constituents. In other words, if you have a... If you have 100 people asking for your position on the public market and you have a stock email response, you can send it out...send that out to 50 or more people. There is also an exception for actions taken by a local government administrative officer pursuant to a specific ordinance or resolution. And so that brings us to the resolution that the council adopted earlier this year. I'm sorry, let me finish up on the statute. This statute applies to state officials during their election period, which is between April 15th and then in the November election. And the reason I point this out is that I think it really does not account for the activity of local government officials because the legislature is typically not in session for most or all of that time when this prohibition is in effect. Of course, Alders are meeting continuously through the election season. And so this is a restriction. This is a statute that could restrict activity that would otherwise be permissible and a normal part of the job of Alders. So just keep that in mind. I think the...you know, it is really focused on state officials, but it does apply to local officials. And the way this ordinance is enforced is either by complaint to the Wisconsin Ethics Commission or to the district attorney. If the...if a complaint is prosecuted, a civil forfeiture can be sought of up to $500 per violation. If there is an intentional violation, that could be a criminal violation where there could be a fine of up to $1,000 and six months imprisonment, as well as forfeiture of office. So the reason I bring this up is not only so the council is aware of the penalties, but it does inform our guidance that we issue in the city attorney's office. These are civil, potentially criminal penalties. These are whether...
You're slighting that.
Whether or not there is a violation is not up to our office. It's up to the Ethics Commission or the district attorney. So our guidance is going to tend to be on the conservative side. And Alders should realize if our complaints filed and forfeitures or fines that are sought, those would be assessed against you individually. They're not covered by the city. You're not represented by the city. They're personal violations. So that brings us to the resolution that the council passed earlier this year, which provides some direction to administrative officers of the city. So this resolution authorizes exceeding the 49-person limit in certain circumstances. When there are postcards sent out for neighborhood meetings regarding development proposals or postcards for informational meetings and the official public hearing regarding license applications for alcohol establishments and for the automated blog subscription service so that the Alders and mayor have access to through the IT department. As you recall, this became a little bit of an issue in 2020 because we had the...those automated subscriptions stopped during the campaign period. Because the council passed this resolution, we feel that's a directive to staff to still send those Alder blog notifications out to people who have requested to be subscribed. This is...I just included in the PowerPoint the language from the resolution directing staff to send out the neighborhood meeting notifications for alcohol licenses and for neighborhood meetings. There is also a catch-all for any notification...any communication that was approved by CCEC. So if there is a subject matter beyond those two...those two processes that an Alder wants to send out communications of 50 or more, they can seek the approval of CCEC. Sure.
So for these...okay. For these two statements here about the licenses and the meetings, so this says it's okay to send more than 50? This is what it says?
50 or more, correct. But my understanding is those are being sent out by city staff, either the clerk's office for alcohol licenses or planning.
And they don't use...I mean, like, I did one licensed one and learned that usually the applicant is responsible for paying those fees and the developer, so it's not really like using funds unless you want to do that. Perfect. Thank you.
Correct, but the Ethics Commission, in our inquiry to them a couple of years ago, they did say it doesn't...does not matter whether the city is...
Okay, so it's not public funds really then? It's just the whole perception of reaching out people?
Right. Those funds, I mean, technically, they become public funds.
Oh, because they're paid to the city? Got it. Okay, thank you.
I just...a quick question, just to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So I started chatting with Debbie around doing a virtual town hall just because there is a consistent questions around the shelter, crime, and some things going on in the East Town area. Oh, I'm sorry. So do I also need the approval of the executive committee before hosting like a virtual town hall? Is that what that's saying, or...?
I think what we should do is let's wait till we get to the end because I want to talk about other restrictions as well that come into play. But it's a good question. Okay, so President Furman, I'm on Slide 8, if that makes a difference. I wanted to talk about some other statutes and ordinances that come into play during the campaign cycle or campaign period. There are some state statutes stating that there cannot be any solicitation of public employees during established hours of employment or while the employee is engaged in their duties. Anybody who has control of a public building is supposed to prohibit entry of anybody for the purpose of making or receiving a political contribution. And candidates are not to send communications or notices for the purpose of requesting or collecting a contribution to any public employee at their office or place of business. There's also something called the public purpose doctrine. You will not find this in the statutes, but it is really a court doctrine. Basically, it says that public funds are only to be used for public purposes and not private purposes. And a campaign is a private function, so we cannot use city funds at all for any type of campaign purpose.
On the prior slide, why is there reference to UW hospitals and clinics only? What does that mean?
Yeah, that...so this is just the words that are in the statutes. So potentially, it may apply because if somebody wanted to solicit a contribution from a UW hospital employee, regardless of what office you were running for, the statute just says that cannot occur on state grounds, UW hospital grounds, you know, a local municipality office setting. So it just applies to employees of UW hospitals and clinics because it's a public institution.
Thank you.
Okay. There...we also have city ordinances in Section 3.35 to be aware of that apply to city employees. City employees are prohibited from campaigning for any candidate while they are on duty. That includes wearing campaign buttons or T-shirts, distributing any campaign literature, or asking for campaign contributions. Employees can also...can also may not, shall not coerce or attempt to coerce campaign contributions or services from any subordinate employees in support of a political candidate, or retaliate against or reward an employee for refraining from participating in any political activity. And also, city employees on or off duty cannot use their title or position in any elective political activity. Okay, so all of this taken together, I tried to just present a little bit of guidance for you to consider that applies on and after December 1st. Of course, these postcards for alcohol license establishment meetings and hearings and for property development meetings are permissible. Mailings and emails and postcards to more than 49 parties for other topics are then subject to CCEC approval. These are questions I posed just to help think through not only the 50-piece rule, but these other statutes and ordinances. So before sending anything out in 50 or more pieces or organizing any functions as an Alder, I think it's useful to just think about, are the city resources related to some city...some pending city legislation or issue? In those cases, I think it's easier to support that it is not for a campaign purpose. Also, does the use of the city resource or use of city staff provide an advantage that would not be available to a challenger in an election? Or does it create a perception that the primary purpose of using the public funds is for a political benefit? And the reason I included those questions is having worked at the Government Accountability Board, which administered and enforced these laws at the state level, those are the instances where you might be most likely to attract a complaint if there's a perception that public funds are being used for a campaign purpose. So Alder Madison, getting back to your question, as I understand it, the question was having to do with holding listening sessions or town hall meetings as an Alder. Now, the first thing to remember is, you know, these are restrictions on using public funds for communications. So emails or postcards, invitations. So on and after December 1st, that 50-piece rule is in effect. If you wanted to have a listening session and only post it on your blog, that would count as one mailing or one distribution. Or if you post it on any...pardon?
City blog?
City blog, right. If you post it on your personal social media, that's not a use of city funds. So...and also because of the date that it goes into effect, any communications that are sent out before December 1st are not subject to this rule. So what you have to be, I think, concerned about is any invitations or announcements that are sent out after December 1st would have to be limited to 49 pieces.
So let's just say this thing happens the last week of January. And I start...once we set a date and a location, let's just say the first week of January or last week of December. Let's just say there's four to six weeks of saying, hey, this date is coming for you to, you know, register for this town hall. So each blog entrance, like, let's just say six weeks, each one each week. So that's six mailings. And then if I...then would I need permission to have like a mailer sent out to let them know about it? And then how does...is each...so I can only send like 49 of those? Or 44 of those?
If you...if the total was going to exceed 49, then it would require CCEC approval.
Gotcha.
If you're under that, then you don't have to seek approval.
For the number of people, not the number of instances? Is that what we're saying?
The number of posts or postcards or emails, all of that combined.
Okay.
Now, that goes to the number. The other interesting question raises though is the subject matter of the town hall or the listening session.
Yep.
So...and that's a little bit more of a gray area, to be honest. I mean, it's...I can...I mean, that, when we are not in election season, that would seem to be a perfectly, you know, routine part of an Alder's job. If you exceeded the 50-piece rule, and frankly, even if the CCEC, you know, gave approval, it's sort of...I mean, it may or may not attract a complaint. I think the...if the more it looks like a general session to get to know people, some people may think, well, you have an advantage there that a challenger wouldn't have in using city resources. If it's focused on things that are immediate before the city, to me, it looks more like legit, you know, city business that can be conducted.
Then I'd...then I have a follow-up question because it's really...it's shelter and then crime in the area. So one of our constituents in the area is wanting to schedule a meeting. And I'm trying to figure out how best to approach it, and I'll likely see you kind of the situation too. But she wants to have a meeting that everyone isn't invited to, it seems. But it also affects, you know, everybody around. And she's wanting to invite, of course, police, shelter folks, the same folks. So it's just like, how can I ask, get a bulk of questions answered for folks versus this one space where it's mostly a private conversation that, you know...
Well, if it's...if it's a neighborhood meeting, I mean, those are going to be open to the public.
Yeah.
I don't think you can restrict people or prevent people from attending.
Okay.
You know, so I mean, we can certainly talk about the details. You know, I would say that I would kind of maybe caution people to think about the use of city staff during these...this campaign period. I mean, that obviously is not something that a challenger has access to. They just ask department heads to show up at meetings that they host. So again, we're kind of in a gray area because of the way the statute's written and what it's intended to do. So I, you know, I think we should talk about the details kind of offline because it's kind of specific.
Alder Harrington McKinnney has a question, and then Alder Figaro will call.
Thank you very much. My question is that if there...the question is that you mentioned that if something goes or possibly can go outside of what is acceptable, it has to be approved by the Common Council Executive Committee. I understand that part, but how and who monitors the Common Council Executive Committee? What is their line of communication to make sure that they are also, you know, not stepping outside the boundaries?
It's a good question, the Alder. I mean, the resolution...by passing the resolution, the council delegated that authority to CCEC to make those decisions. The resolution did not provide for any type of appeal process. So what we have now is just simply a resolution saying Alders can seek the approval of CCEC, and that's the end of the process. You know, I suppose an Alder could attempt to bring anything to the council floor, but the resolution itself does not really anticipate any step beyond CCEC approval or denial.
So as a follow-up, just to make sure that, you know, we are consistent with the rules, the resolution as it is written, can that be...can that be updated? Because that's my main question is that how will the executive committee monitor themselves?
Right, I mean, it...there could certainly be another resolution introduced, but that's what we have in the books right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder. We have Alder Figaro call, and then Alder Carter.
Thank you. So this campaign cycle, past campaign cycle, the city clerk and many of us put a lot of emphasis on encouraging people to vote, to get their absentee ballots. And, you know, very generic, but again, very pushy. And we need to, you know, somehow we need to continue to do that. Is that then is going to be enough for the 20 of us then? They are on their own as a method of communication?
Well, I guess it depends on how and how many.
I mean, just in the blog, I mean.
Right, right, right. The blog, I mean, so between December 1st and the April election, if you put on your blog the same sentence about voting and you did it 49 times, that's acceptable. If you do it more than 49 times, then it's potentially violation.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's all I got.
Alder Carter, and then Alder Furman.
Thank you, Mayor. My question to Attorney Hauston, I think, is a clarification. I believe you said that if it...and I'm paraphrasing. If it is not alcohol ALRC notification or development, then we would have to petition the CCEC for permission to have the meeting, for lack of a better word. Is that correct?
Well, it's the number of communications related to a meeting. You can have a meeting, you know, as long as it's... You know, as long as it has to do with city business. But the 50-piece rule has to do with sending out communications inviting people to the meeting.
Okay, so it doesn't matter what the subject is. It's the 50-piece rule?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
And looking at my slides, I think I might have skipped over a fairly significant slide related to blogs. The council resolution, and this also creates a little bit of a gray area, it did not define, did not discuss what is permissible content for an Alder blog. So given all of the, you know, the rules that we've covered, the guidance that I specified on this slide is that if it's a pending city matter or issue, or if it has to do with an upcoming city meeting or city event, that that is permissible. What is not permissible, of course, is any campaign announcement or news. That's never permissible, no matter what time of the year. So I know that the council office sent out an email saying, you know, do not state on your blog... Right, I mean, it, it, there could certainly be another resolution introduced, but that, that's what we have in the books right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder. We have Alder Figaro call, and then Alder Carter.
Thank you. So this campaign cycle, past campaign cycle, the city clerk and many of us put a lot of emphasis on, on encouraging people to vote, to get their absentee ballots, and, you know, very generic, but again, very pushy, and we need to, you know, somehow we need to continue to do that. Is that then, is going to be enough for the 20 of us then? They are on their own as a method of communication?
Well, I guess it depends on how and how many.
I mean, just in the blog, I mean.
Right, right, right. The blog, I mean, so between December 1st and, and the April election, if you put on your blog the same sentence about voting, and you did it 49 times, that's acceptable. If you do it more than 49 times, then it's potentially violation.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's all I got.
Alder Carter, and then Alder Furman.
Thank you, Mayor. My question to Attorney Haas, and I think it's a clarification. I believe you said that if it, and I'm paraphrasing, if it is not alcohol, ALRC notification, or development, then we would have to petition the CCEC for permission to have the meeting, for lack of a better word. Is, is that correct?
Well, it, it's the number of communications related to a meeting. You can have a meeting, you know, as long as it's, you know, as long as it has to do with city business, but the 50-piece rule has to do with sending out communications inviting people to the meeting.
Okay, so it doesn't matter what the subject is, it's the 50-piece rule?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
And I, looking at my slides, I think I might have skipped over a fairly significant slide related to blogs. The council resolution, and this also creates a little bit of a gray area, it did not define, did not discuss what is permissible content for an alder blog. So given all of the, you know, the rules that we've covered, the guidance that, that I specified on this slide is that if it's a pending city matter or issue, or if it has to do with an upcoming city meeting or city event, that that is permissible. What is not permissible, of course, is any campaign announcement or news. That's never permissible, no matter what time of the year. So I know that the council office sent out an email saying, you know, do not state on your blog if you're, that you are announcing that you are running for reelection. I think it's okay to say if you are announcing that you are not running for election. I think that's okay. But, you know, announcing that you're running for election, that's a, a private affair. It's not, you're not supposed to use public funds for that. Any news that is not related to pending city matters and issues, and specifically, to be on the conservative side, I would say for this campaign period, to not include announcements about community events and meetings that are not city events. And again, that's maybe just to be on the safe side, but I think the more you use the blog to advertise activities of entities other than the city, that may tend to attract a complaint. And if you have any questions about, you know, whether you think content is acceptable to be on your blog or not, you can feel free to contact us or the council office.
Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. Attorney Haas, I want to talk a little bit more about the CCEC component, because there's definitely, obviously, there were some questions to that. I, I would assume that was put in there, I was not one of the authors of this, to avoid having discussions at a council meeting every time somebody had a question or wanted to go through something, right? I mean, that, that's probably, you know, for lack of a better place, having it go to that committee opposed to, you know, on the council floor talking about, you know, Alder X wants to do this particular thing, and, you know, let's, let's spend a half hour of, of council time trying to figure it out. Does that, having drafted it, is that?
I, I, that's, yeah, sure. I think that's probably one of the reasons to not have to have those discussions in the council floor.
And, and we could certainly modify that and have an appeals process to the council if people, if that's what people wanted, right?
Sure.
But I, but I think one of the things that you had said earlier, we probably want to make clear, CCEC and, and the council, or even you for that matter, can give advice that the state would disagree with, right?
Correct.
And so it really is on an alder to, to practice extraordinary caution when they're, when they're making these decisions, knowing that just because CCEC or Attorney Haas told you you can do it, doesn't mean you can definitely do it.
That's correct. And just to reinforce that, that's one of the reasons, because we are, this resolution is a little bit, you know, unique. It's not something that the Ethics Commission has signed off on. And so that's one of the reasons I'm, you know, tending to be conservative in our guidance. And so alders know, if you sort of go beyond what our comfort zone is, that you're, you're sort of on your own.
Great, thank you.
Alder Evers, you are next.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have a couple of questions. One having to do with the non-city content. Two examples, I think, that are, where they are bringing up. Council staff currently prepares a summary of, of highlights and events that many alders use all their portions of for their, their weekly blogs. There's a lot of content there that could, you know, be about the Madison Night Market or the Holiday Open House, or, or, you know, some home, homeowner, first-time home buyer kind of thing that is a, maybe it's a nonprofit, not a city-related function. Are you saying that we should inform council staff to edit all that material out and not include any of it in our blogs as announcements as to things that are going on for our residents?
I, I think to be on the safe side during this campaign period, it's, it's best not to include those on the blogs. Now, I mean, council staff can certainly, you know, provide that for your information about what's going on around the city, but my, my-
So you would, you would suggest then, if, whether it's there or not, we not use it?
Right.
But it might be better if staff were not to include it during this time period so people would not be confused. But I'll leave that to leadership to decide, to determine. But, you know, if there's, if there's a shooting in Colorado Springs at a gay nightclub or a school shooting in Texas, alders sometimes weigh in on these national events of matter of deep concern. Are you suggesting that that is inappropriate during a campaign season?
It's a, it's a tough question, Alder. I, I think it maybe depends how it's framed.
If there's a shooting in with the city of Madison, as a homicide that occurred in District 13 today, is that inappropriate for that to be mentioned as a subject of concern?
No, I, I think if it happens in the city, I think that's appropriate.
Thank you. And then lastly, lastly, you mentioned neighborhood meetings and staff. Say a neighborhood association was concerned about the transit-oriented development overlay district, and it was, would be appropriate under normal circumstances to have staff attend that neighborhood meeting to answer questions. Are you suggesting that, would it be all right, for example, for an alder to say, well, if you want staff to attend, here's a, here's how you can get ahold of them. Feel free to invite them yourself, but to not actually be the one who's inviting them? Or is it that we shouldn't invite them at all under those circumstances?
No, good question. I, I think a couple of options. They can certainly go to the department, to the agency themselves. I think in some cases, it may be appropriate for the alder to, to get involved and invite staff. If it is sort of what you would describe as kind of typical, what the routine practice is, I would be a little bit more concerned with kind of initiating meetings on new topics that are not, you know, immediate issues before the city, that do not have to do with a specific development proposal, or, you know, a, a neighborhood meeting about a specific item that's, that's in front of the council.
So the purpose is that alders not take unfair advantage of their access to staff and in a sense, show off during a campaign season, but to stick to business and to do so with discretion and, and, you know, not, not cross any boundaries?
That's a great way to put it, Alder.
Thank you.
I think Alder Bennett is next, and then Alder Wihilehi.
Hello? Okay, so I was wondering, I know that we're not supposed to use our alder email and stuff for campaign stuff. It's like a very fine line to walk. I just like, I mean, for example, someone like recently emailed regarding campaign stuff, and then like I had to like go off of my alder email, like email them back, like. So like, do I email them from my alder account, or do I like just say like, don't just ignore it?
What the state advises is two things, that you forward that to your personal or your campaign email, and then from there, you advise those individuals to not use your city email address for campaign questions.
Okay. And then how, so can we, so like, are we like not allowed to talk about campaign stuff at all at city events?
Yes.
Like if we're in person at a city event, we can't talk about our campaign?
Well, I guess it, it depends what type of event you're talking about. If you're at a, at a, at a city meeting, the answer is yes. If you're at a city-
Holiday party.
Yeah, some, some city event that is a social event, and you're not, you know, you're not giving a speech, but you're talking to people individually, then you can, that's not a use of public funds. You're not using, you're not sitting in your office, or the council office, for instance. You're not using city email.
So like, we can't, but we could not go to like a neighborhood meeting and be like, I'm running?
No, I think in, I think-
A neighborhood meeting is not a city event.
Oh. An event that you'd be at as an, okay, never mind, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Alder Wihilehi?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Attorney Haas, for your presentation. My question is back to the new ordinance resolution that we adopted this year. Can you elaborate more of what's the, the nature of that ordinance? Specifically, you know, where alders can still continue working for the city business, like development or other alcohol license? If you can just briefly, you know, describe or explain what that entails. But the other piece that I want, I'm interested in is how did we come up with, it has to go through the CCEC for approval for any 50 or 49 pieces, more than 49 pieces? So how, how did we come up with the CCEC has to approve that? Thank you.
Well, thank you, Alder. The, the short answer is that's what is in the resolution, and that's what the council passed. It, it only passed three specific exceptions to the, to the 50-piece rule. For city staff to print and send neighborhood meeting notifications for the alcohol establishment licenses, and in those cases, to list the name and contact information of the alder, and to do the same for sending neighborhood meeting notifications pursuant to the pre-application guidelines that the Planning Division has. And then thirdly, to produce and distribute any additional public, public notifications or communications approved by the Common Council Executive Committee, in, in addition to the automated alder and mayor blog notifications. So those are the only exceptions that were included in the resolution, and that's, that's what the council passed.
Thank you. And one more follow-up. So if the CCEC approves my, my meeting or my blog or, or something like that, then it happens to be a violation, then the CCEC will not be responsible for my actions, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any other alders with hands raised, and I'll point out that we're at 6:25. So any closing thoughts?
As I said, just feel free to contact our office if you have any questions. I know this is a little bit different than we've, how we proceeded in the past, so we want to make sure we answer your questions. And thanks for your time.
Great. Thank you all. We'll be back at 6:30.
They can increase, uh, revenue.
The hour of 6:30 having arrived, I will call to order the common council meeting of Tuesday, November 22nd, 2022. Now ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alder Mayadze.
Present.
Alder Mayadze is present. Alder Paulson.
Present.
Present. Alder Fair.
Here.
Present. Alder Tischler.
Present.
Alder Revere.
Here.
Present. Alder Vittavir.
Present.
Present. Alder Weheli.
Here.
Present. Alder Abbas.
Present.
Alder Benford.
Present.
Present. Alder Bennett.
Here.
Present. Alder Carter.
Present.
Alder Carter is present. Alder Conklin is excused. Vice President Curry.
Here.
Present. Alder Evers.
Here.
Present. Alder Figaroa Cole.
Here.
Present. Alder Foster.
Here.
Present. President Furman.
Present.
Present. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Present.
Present. Alder Heck.
Here.
Present. Alder Madison.
Here.
Present. Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you very much. So, uh, just remind us to assume good intent and to be kind and to refrain from using profanities, please. Are there any disclosures or recusals on any items on today's agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. A consent agenda is moved with recommend- recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings except, one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, two, items which Alders have separated out for discussion slash debate purposes. This document lists agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, and items introduced from the floor. Items with recommendations different from the agenda. Agenda item 32, Legislative File 74483, substitute pertaining to alder salaries, Alder Grant Foster, recommended action, adopt substitute. Agenda item 64, Badger Meter Inc., introduction of new business for referral without debate. It's an agenda correction, change referrals to the finance committee on January 30th, the water utility board on January 24th, and the common council on February 7th. Agenda item 66, Legislative File 74665, N. Harris Computer Corporation, introduction of new business for referral without debate, agenda correction, change referral to finance committee on January 30th, water utility board on January 24th, and the common council on February 7th. Agenda item 66, Legislative File 74665, N. Harris Computer Corporation, introduction of new business for referral without debate, agenda correction, change referral to finance committee on January 30th, water utility board on January 24th, the common council on February 7th. Agenda item 67, Legislative File 74666, Itron Inc., introduction of new business for referral without debate, agenda correction, change referral to the finance committee on January 30th, water utility board on January 24th, and the common council on February 7th. Agenda item 77, Legislative File 74707, contract with 16 Bars LLC, DBA Gibbs Bar, for exclusive alcohol beverage service at the Warner Park Community Recreation Center, introduction of new business for referral without debate, agenda correction, change referral to finance committee on November 28th, and the common council on December 6th. Items excluded by the request of Alders or due to speakers registered by 6:30 PM on November 22nd. Um, there were no items requested for exclusion by Alders as of noon, but we do have agenda item five, Legislative File 74080, pertaining to 219 North Fair Oaks Avenue, 15th Alder District, from temporary agricultural district to TR-U1. And then we have several items that are being introduced from the floor. Legislative File 74756, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract amendment with Madison Area Urban Ministry, DBA Justine, to extend ESG-CV contract terms through July 31st, 2023. Alder Matt Fair, refer to the Community Development Block Grant Committee on December 1st, the finance committee on November 28th, and the common council on December 6th. Legislative File 74757, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract amendment with the Salvation Army of Dane County to transfer funds from its rapid rehousing program to its family shelter program. Alder Matt Fair, refer to the Community Development Block Grant Committee on December 1st, the finance committee on November 28th, and the common council on December 6th. And then Legislative File 74778, recreate the 0.65 FTE Clerk 2 position, number 496 in CG32.02 as a 1.0 FTE position within the library budget. Alder Keith Furman, refer to the finance committee on November 28th and the common council on December 6th.
Second. Uh, we're not quite there yet, but thank you. Um, we also have a registered speaker on item number two. Um, and we need to exclude the Destination Madison report item, which I'm not immediately seeing what agenda number that is. 11. All right. Are there any other items that Alders would like to have excluded from the consent agenda? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor. I'd like to exclude item number 32.
Item 32, Alder?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other items that Alders would like to have excluded from the consent agenda? Seeing none, then we'll just refresh and look one more time. We have a number of items that have recommendations that are different from what's printed on your agenda. So let me run through those. And then I'll run through the items that are excluded. So for the differing recommendations on item, items 64, 66, and 67, we have a change in referrals. All of them will go to finance on 1:30, the water utility on 1:24, and common council on 2:07. Item 77 will go to finance on 11:28, and the council on 12:06. We have the following exclusions from the consent agenda, items 2, 5, 11, and 32. And then we have three items that were introduced from the floor. Are there any additional items for the consent agenda? Right now, President Furman, a motion.
Move adoption?
Second.
That's moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objections to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda. And that will take us to public comment. Our first item with public comment is agenda item number two, which is approving plan specifications and a schedule of assessments for South Owen Drive Assessment District for 2023. We have one registrant wishing to speak, Thomas George Poop Jr. from District 5. Thomas?
Can I come up there?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
You have three minutes.
Okay. I don't think I need that long. Thank you. Um, I live on South Owen Drive. My name is Tom Pop, um, and I came partly to say thank you for doing this. Our street is raggedy. It needs to be fixed. I've lived there for 30 years and it's patch upon patch. So you're doing it. Great. I really appreciate that. Um, yeah, it's going to cost me some money, but it needs to be done. What I want to ask you, though, is once it gets done, please don't salt it. Please don't salt it. The other streets around there aren't salted. They're equally steep. There is a hill on the block above us. We're from Regent, you're doing from Regent to Hillcrest. Yeah. Um, and from Bagley up to Hillcrest is, is a hill. And if your engineering department says it's got to be salted, you probably ought to listen to them. But I see the traffic get along just fine there, just fine even when it's not salted. Um, it's terrible for the lakes. You know that. I know your city policy is not to salt anymore than you absolutely has, have to. But, uh, and you would save some money. It would, the other, the other piece about that is that a salted street encourages cut through traffic. The through traffic should be on Midvale, not on South Owen Drive. It's a public street. Anybody can drive on it. That's fine. I don't, I don't begrudge anybody doing that. But if we invite them by salting a street more than the others around there are salted, it doesn't need to be done and they ought to be on Midvale. That's just my opinion and I appreciate your giving me a chance to say so. Um, one more thing is that our neighborhood associations, Sunset Village Community Association, passed a resolution supporting something similar to this, minimizing salt. So thank you for building a street. Appreciate that. We need it and I hope you don't salt it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, there are questions for the registrant? Seeing none, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Um, our next item with public comment is agenda item number five, creating sections of the Madison General ordinances to change the zoning at 219 North Fair Oaks Ave. We have one registrant wishing to speak, Jeannie Kramer of District 15.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Kramer, and I don't think I'm going to be as eloquent as the last speaker. I, uh, came here tonight to speak in favor of the development at 219 North Fair Oaks. I'm probably the, oh, I am the closest neighbor. I support the project for a couple of reasons. First of all, it's responsible infill. The building is being built within the footprint of an existing asphalt parking lot. One of the other reasons I support the project is because the developers want to put a lot of effort into restoring, restoring and improving the Starkweather Creek shoreline as well as the, um, adjacent area, which is now pretty overrun by, um, invasives. It's a very special little micro ecosystem that I hope can be preserved. It's also a local business, and I think we need to support our local businesses as much as possible. In my remaining time, I'd like to take an opportunity to shed some light on another issue that's related to this, and that's the proposed Chicago Avenue extension. This is a road that would be built to serve the new development in the Voight Farm area at the expense of the existing, of the existing, um, already established neighborhood. I believe they call it now, uh, naturally occurring affordable housing. Sorry about my voice. Anyway, um, there's been a lot of misinformation circulating about this plan, and the truth, as I said, is that this road is designed to, um, serve the new development. The, um, the community most affected by the road had not really had a lot of input because the Chicago Avenue extension was basically a footnote in a much bigger project. I think it needs to be treated as a standalone issue. I think that there needs to be community discussions and planning related to that.
You have about 30 seconds.
What?
You have about 30 seconds left.
Oh, okay. And although we're not addressing that tonight, I really want you to remember this for future meetings and when this may come up again. And I really appreciate your service. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. That's it for public comment. So we'll go on to, uh, item number two, which is Legisdar 74427, approving plan specifications and a schedule of assessments for South Owen Drive Assessment District. President Furman?
Move adoption?
It's moved and seconded to adopt. Are there questions? Is there discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item two. Take us to item five, which is Legisdar 74080, creating sections of the Madison General ordinances to change the zoning at 219 North Fair Oaks Ave. President Furman?
Move adoption?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Are there questions? Is there discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item five. And that will take us to item 11, which is Legisdar 74701, a council update, the performance and activity update from Destination Madison. We'll have our friends from Destination Madison come forward and give us the update.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. President Furman, Mayor Rhodes Conway, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I'm Ellie Westman Chin, the president and CEO of Destination Madison, and so I'm just going to run through, um, a presentation tonight to let you know what we're doing and what our direction is and where we are heading. What our core mission is at Destination Madison is to drive visitors to our city to stay in our hotels and spend money in our restaurants and our attractions and our retail outlets. And we do that through different, different ways. One is leisure travelers. You know, the people that are going to come in with a friend or a family member or a spouse or a partner and just spend the weekend here are through groups, which are meetings and conventions or sporting events. We turn 50, the organization turns 50 next week, so this is kind of a highlight of different milestones in those 50 years that really kept taking tourism in Madison to another level, like the opening of Monona Terrace 25 years ago, that really put us in the convention business, which we weren't really there before that. So room tax is levied every time somebody stays in a hotel room. So when you check into a hotel, you have the rate that you pay and you pay a hotel tax on that. The hotel collects that hotel, um, room tax. They remit that to the city. The city retains 30% of that for general purposes. And then 70% of that is then distributed by the Room Tax Commission. The Room Tax Commission is a commission that's comprised of about six people chaired by Sally Miley. So we meet a couple of times a year. We talk about what we think the forecast for room tax is, what we think we're doing looking forward, and how collections are coming in. So to just give you a little bit of a look back, um, in 2019, the direct visitor spending for tourism was $1.4 billion in Madison. That fell 43% in 2020 when COVID hit and, you know, the world closed down as we know it. But in 2021, we were able to build that back up to $1.05 billion, and we were really excited about that because for the first five months of 2021, we were still pretty restricted with COVID restrictions, you know, 25% occupancy. We lost 39 events during that time period that decided to either not host their event or to go somewhere else. So, um, so I think being restricted for five months of the year and still getting a $1.05 billion is a really good outlook for tourism in Madison as we move forward. My favorite number is always this number. So if you take that, that number, do some math around it, on average, visitors spent in Madison in 2021, $2.9 million per day. I think that's a more consum-, you know, consumable number than the bigger number. So this is a, this is a metric that we track, hotel occupancy. What we want to know is day in and day out, how many hotel room nights are we filling? So we want to know what the occupancy is in, is in Madison. So you can see the light pink color is 2020. The bright red color is 2021, so we actually built up a bit over 2021. But the most exciting number on here is the blue line. That's this year. So right now, we are just behind two, we're tracking just behind 2019. If we stay on forecasts that we're on right now, we will track consistently with or above 2019 by mid 2023. The other metric that we track is average daily rate. So, you know, as you guys know, you check into a hotel and the rate is 189 a night. So we wanted to see what that is in Madison. That is tracked. That is tracking extremely well in 2022. As you can see on the blue line, it has shot up tremendously. Octo, I'm sorry, August of this year was right about $20 to $30 over August of 2020, 2021. So, what have we done? I came in February of 2021, and the first thing we did out of the gate was we worked with our board, we worked with our staff, and we worked with our partners, and we created a recovery plan. Because I came from Tennessee that opened very quickly, and I knew what recovery looked like when it opened. People start coming, and you have to be ready for it. You can't open and go, what are we going to do? So, what we did was, on the leisure side, we expanded our target market from a 250-mile radius to a 400-mile radius. So, that gave us a lot more depth of where we were advertising. We started doing some persona advertising. So, these are our four personas. The active adventurers, that might be somebody that's coming in with their kids, but it could be somebody that's coming in with their partner or their friends, and they just want to have a fun weekend. Or maybe somebody that's coming in alone that just wants a quiet weekend because they've got all these kids at home. And then we have the kicking back vacationers. That's more of our boomer market. And then our newest market that we've not really promoted to before is the young socially conscious traveler. So, we executed the recovery campaign. This is one of the ads that we ran in Midwest Living. It was the only print ad we ran. Otherwise, that campaign was completely digital. And what we knew from our research was that people wanted ease of traveling. 20 and 21 were difficult. We all know that, right? Like, every day, we were talking about COVID. Are we opening? Are we closing? Are we masked? Are we not? So, visitors wanted a place they could come to and have a good time, and it wasn't a difficult thing to do. So, some of these are the ads that we ran, and this really resonated well with the visitor. Start at the zoo, walk nine minutes into the beach. Now, tell me, where else can you do that, right? We also, instead of advertising only during our pretty, you know, like the warmer months of summer, we became a four-season advertising campaign. So, we showed people having fun on the lakes when they were frozen over, and we showed people having fun on the lakes whenever they were water. So, it was across the board, and it really did a good job for us. It drove 61,000 new users to our website, and our social media followers increased 25%. So, we were really pleased with that campaign. In April of this year, we launched a much bigger brand campaign. I'm excited about this campaign because this campaign dives deeper into those personas where we're talking directly to them. So, if somebody's on, if they see the ad in the middle with the young family playing in front of the Capitol, and they click on that ad to learn more about it, what we're going to do is drive them to this part of our website that says "kid-approved travel." We're not going to take them to the website that's maybe nightlife, you know, or something that they don't want to do because they've got their kids with them. And this has been working really well for us. In just six months, it's driven over 115,000 people to our, to our website, new users to our website. So, one thing we did this year, and I'm really excited about this because we've never done it before, but we executed a business-to-business campaign. That's the groups, the meeting planners, the sports planners, like that side of our business, right, where that group business is coming in. So, we've run campaigns digitally on LinkedIn, other places where we know meeting planners are kind of hanging out, where they're getting in their information. And then we've also ran a series of print ads because we do have quite a few publications in the meetings and the sports industry that are still printed, and we wanted to make sure we had exposure there. This is one of my favorites, From Airport to Happy Hour and Just Under Hour. And this is really important for meeting planners because they want to know that when their people arrive here, their attendees arrive here, that they're going to be able to get around Madison pretty easily. They like the fact that we're a walkable city, and these are doing really well. So, the past 16, 18 months, we've been working really closely with Monona Terrace with a company called JLL, and we implemented an optimization study because we wanted to take a look at Monona Terrace and saying, are we utilizing the building to the best that we can, right? Basically, generating revenue, not only from Monona Terrace, but in our hotels as well. What we came away from is that Destination Madison is going to be focused on these Priority One and Priority Two groups, meaning peak room block at a hotel is going to be at least 250 room nights. That's a, that's a big size conference for us. But revenue spending in Monona Terrace is going to be around $60,000, which is higher than our average. We have a five-year glide path that by the time we reach 2026, we will consistently be hosting 45 new P1 and P2 events in Monona Terrace every year. These big conventions are really important to us because it just generates revenue. Don't worry, there will still be room for the galas and the chamber events and, you know, the other things that are really important as far as the community part of the community center at Monona Terrace. So, that's where we've been, and we've had a lot of discussions in the office of where we are going. And we have big dreams, just so you know. So, we have a huge focus on DEI, both internally within our organization and externally, both locally, externally, and with our planners and the folks that we're bringing in. We're going to expand our marketing campaign, and workforce continues to be a huge issue in hospitality and tourism, so we are putting some programs around, around that to support our industry. We're going to create a destination brand toolkit and assets for not only us to use, but our planners to use and media to use and our partners to use. We're going to fully implement, implement that optimization study, and in January, we're going to launch our brand-new three-year strategic plan, and I can't wait to share that with you as well. And then, in June of 2023, Rob Guard, my colleague that's here with me tonight, has booked for us the Public Relations Society of American Travel and Tourism Conference. 300 travel PR professionals from across the United States with 30 to 40 top travel media. They're going to be here for about five days, and we're going to show them all the great things of Madison so they go home and write about us. So, what's possible? This is where, this is where our really big dreams come in. So, in the PR world, we want to continue to be a national leader in hosting diverse travel media here. We want to expand our media presence in meetings, groups, and sports. On the marketing side, we want to expand our neighborhood branding and storytelling. When a visitor comes in, I can guarantee you, they're going to go to the Capitol, they're going to walk around the square, they're going to walk down State Street, they're going to go to UW, right? Well, what we want them to do is do that and two or three other things where they're staying more nights here. So, we want them to go to East Wash, and we want them to go to Willy Street. So, we're going to expand that storytelling and then continue to personalize that advertising to our target audiences. We hope to advertise in direct flight market, you know, so like the DCs, everywhere we have a direct flight. And then, our big, big dream is to activate in big cities. Chicago's a huge market for us. We love Chicago. They come in, they spend a ton of money with us. What if we hit the streets there and we just bring Madison to them and give them even more reason to come and see us? And then, we're going to continue to look at securing those national sporting events like CrossFit and Ironman. And then, one of the things we started doing at trade shows, you know, when we go to a trade show, the competition is the fiercest I've ever seen in my entire career, as you can imagine. And so, we want to do advertising and promotion at trade shows. There's 400 cities at these trade shows. How do we get Madison up here and not just among everybody else? So, again, our core mission is to drive those room nights, increase that room tax fund that we all love, you know, working on and, and having at our disposal to use for the different things that we're doing. That helps us with our residents because in 2021, the room tax allowed Dane County households to receive $563 in equivalent services. It really is important for the resident as well. And then, where are we going? You know, for two years now, every destination in the country's been like, oh, when are we getting back to 2019? When are we getting back to 2019? And I'm like, why do we want to go back to 2019? Part of our 2020, our new three-year strategic plan is, you know what, we're going to go to $2 billion in direct visitor spending. Let's just get that visitor here. Let's beat all of our competitors, and let's have them come here. That was a very quick overview, and my email is up here, so if you ever want to take a deeper dive in or if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out and ask anything that you would like to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Are there questions for Ellie? Alder Bitterver?
This is probably tough to answer, but the question is, is, do you have any way to track how many people come to Madison on a visit and then wind up checking out homesinmadison.com, zillow.com, whatever, and, you know, thinking, hey, maybe I want to move here?
We don't have a tracking mechanism for that right now, but I will tell you, and I've talked to Jason Fields at MadRep about this, I do think a lot of times it starts with a visit, right? Somebody comes in. It was really interesting. I had a meeting today with somebody who moved here six months ago, and I was like, can I just record everything you said? Because it was the same thing, like, I moved here, oh my gosh, I didn't even know how to explain the city. The vibe is so amazing. Everything I want to do is in this city. It's an amazing way to get around. So, not right now, we don't have a way to track that, but we have had a lot of conversations about how can we track that because I feel confident it's happening probably pretty regularly.
You, Alder Bennett?
Can I give comment? Okay. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I was in Chicago the other day, and there was like this person that I ran into that was like, yeah, I visited Madison the other day, and I was like, wait, you live in Chicago and you visit Madison, really? No, but it was nice. They were like, yeah, I love Madison. I was, I have two questions. One, how are you attracting visitors through partnering with, like, local artists and music vendors and stuff like that?
Yeah, that's a great question because that's really important to what we do. So, we are consistently bringing artists into our conversation, especially on the PR side with the media that Rob brings in, because we want them to see that of Madison because we have amazing artists here and amazing music. I don't know if you noticed on some of the ads, we actually had music in some of our ads, so we're doing it through our ads, we're doing it through PR, and we are just starting to do it in our trade show booths as well.
Okay, cool. Thank you. And then, secondly, are you doing any partnerships with UW to kind of retain people here? Because like, I know every, every semester, we have just Parents' Weekend where we have tons of parents out here for a couple of days, and it'd be nice if they stayed a little bit longer to do what you said.
Absolutely. That's a great question. UW is an integral partner of ours because of what they do, not only with Parents' Weekend, Badgers' Football Weekends, and Alumni Weekend, and Grandparents' Weekend. We love all the weekends, you know? So, we meet with them probably every other week just to talk about other ways we can support those activities that they're doing and make sure they've got collateral and the materials they need to give to people when they come in. But, yeah, we're hoping to grow that. They know that. I've already, we've already spoke with them about that, but that's a very important partnership for us.
Okay.
Thank you. Good questions.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Heck?
Thank you, Mayor Ellie, and thank you for the presentation. It's, it's exciting. A question, I know you were not showing all your marketing materials, but I noticed there wasn't, perhaps I missed it, but there wasn't representation of LGBTQ people, and I wondered if you're doing specific targeting of queer organizations, conventions, groups, or even individual tourists.
So, that's a very good question because we do have it in a bigger deck that, you know, if I were going to be up here for 40 minutes, you would have seen it. But, that is such an important market for us because so many people come here because they know it's safe and they know they're welcomed here, and that is a market that we're going to expand in 2023. We've already discussed that in the office, not only through leisure travel, but also through the group market. We just, did we just host or did we just win? We just hosted gay volleyball, and the largest transgender ice hockey tournament in the world was just at Cap Ice. ESPN was in covering that, and they're going to do a documentary about it, but very, very important market for us. Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the question.
Alder. Alder Tischler?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I grew up here in Madison, and there was a point in my life where I just couldn't wait to get away from the city, but then, once I was away for a while, I realized, you know, how special it was. I guess my question is, what are you doing to, to attract, bring back those people who grew up here, lived here for a significant period of time to come back and, and visit?
Yeah, well, and we, you know, not only to visit, but we've actually talked about that group of people to come back and work here, right? Because not only is hospitality hurting for workforce, but we know a lot of our friends in other industries are hurting for workforce as well. But I'm not sure if we're doing a real target on the used-to-live here and moved away and needs to, need to come back and visit, but that's a really great idea that we could do some ideas or maybe some geofencing around. Yeah, absolutely. So, many people I have met have been like you, where they're like, I lived here and then I moved away, but I'm back. Yeah. It's a hard place to stay away from.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Paulson?
Yeah, a question and then, two questions and then just a comment. First question is, have we seen, as the Judge Doyle Square Hotel continues to get closer to completion, are we starting to see that in the Monona Terrace bookings? Is that enabling new things? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, we're already working really closely with the hotel. They're not booking before 2024, so as we look at that future business, you know, on average, we are seeing some very short-term bookings, which is good for 2023, but on our average, our bookings are three to five years out, which plays well to Judge Doyle Square. So, we're already working really closely with them on those future bookings and future room nights. That's a, that's a big selling point for us to have that hotel, those 260 rooms, that close to Monona Terrace. Absolutely.
Okay. And then, my remaining two are a little more comments and questions, but one, I'd like to encourage you to continue to consider using parts of the room tax to fund parts of, outside of the 30%, 70% split, in the 70% split, I think there are certain things that would classify close enough as tourism spending, but are vital infrastructure for us. I'll pick one that I'm a big fan of, which is helping our taxi industry. Yet another taxi company has failed or is, is leaving the industry here in the next couple of days, and so we're in real trouble. And it's a pretty terrible sign when you get to the airport and there's no cabs there. I mean, it is a little bit like, you know, is this a real city or not? And so, I think that's, should be a real, an important concern for Destination Madison, but it's also a larger concern for the rest of the city, so I'd encourage you to think about that. And then, because it's holiday weekend, and this is top of mind, I'd encourage you also to, to advertise more to the city of Madison. The thing I'm particularly interested in is what-on-earth-do-you-do with yourparents.com? And, and, you know, some kind of internal marketing campaign And, and, you know, some kind of internal marketing campaign to, to the rest of us of, you know, here are things to do. Um, because when you sit around, like, okay, well, where are we going to go? Well, we'll go to the zoo, and we'll go to Old Brick, and we'll do the Capitol. It's like, well, we did that last time I was in town. And, and so I, um, I think it would just be really great for, uh, for, for Destination Madison to turn around and, and say, you know, you're already here. Do you know about all these things? And can we get that out? And I think that's, uh, A, just helpful for, for, um, helpful for us, just, I mean, what am I, what on earth am I going to do with mom all weekend? Um, uh, but also, um, it's, it's indirect marketing, right? For, um, you know, now that I know what to do with mom, when my friends come to town, I've got, you know, or when I'm pitching, where are we going to get together this year? It's like, oh, well, you can come to Madison, we've got these things. So I think it, I think it has a very direct, uh, turn into, uh, uh, additional word of mouth, um, and additional, uh, additional advertising through a, a very difficult but important channel of, of, you know, peer-to-peer. So I-
That's great advice. In the short term, um, I don't have a whatto doitwithmom.com, but, um, definitely visit our website, because we keep our events page very updated. It's our number one place that people go to visit. So if you're looking for something to do, go check out the events page and see if you can find some activities.
Okay. Now, I just felt my phone vibrating, and I hope to God mom isn't watching.
Just gonna say, Alder.
What are we doing?
Um, but, but Ellie, just following up on the, the first part of Alder's questions, just firstly for everybody's information, Destination Madison doesn't control that 70%. That's controlled by the Room Tax Commission. And so we could certainly talk to them, uh, about additional things. But Ellie, I know that you, you have been concerned about airport transportation. And do you want to say anything more about that?
Yeah, it's, it's a huge concern, right? Because, um, you know, not all of our direct flights have come back yet. So right now, in some cases, it is a little bit difficult to get here. Um, and so when people get here, they want to get in that taxi, that Uber, that Lyft, and they want to be able to get to their hotel pretty quickly. And we're even challenged i- in that space as well. And so that's something we were just talking about in a meeting yesterday, because we're like, how can we enhance this and make it better? The other challenge is a lot of our hotels haven't brought back their shuttles, because they don't have people to drive them. And so we, we're just talking about different ways we can work with the hotels to see if we can't just get some shuttles going for those peak periods when we know people are coming into town. But it, that is so high on our list, because it is part of the visitor experience. And they're, it could be their first impression if it's the first time they've visited us. Yeah.
You, Alder, what he'll have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ellie. And when we first met, you know, you had such a great ambition for this position. And I am really, uh, uh, great that, you know, you have such a very promising, uh, forecast for Destination Madison. So congratulations. But my, my question is, uh, as you talk about the DEI work, both internal and externally, uh, what, who are your, uh, external, um, uh, partners as you, uh, encounter this, uh, initiative?
Yes, good question. Uh, many of our partners are in the tourism and hospitality industry. So it's hotels and restaurants and attractions and performing arts venues. You know, any, any partner that is, uh, what I like to call visitor-facing, meaning a visitor can walk in off the street and buy a ticket or experience what they have to offer. So those are, that's our partners, is really that, um, those different retailers and restaurants and hotels and so forth.
Thank you, Alder. I don't have any other Alders in the queue with questions or comments. So thank you, Ellie.
Thank you very much. And happy holidays to everyone. I feel like I'm standing between like this and turkey for everybody.
Almost, almost, but not quite. Thank you, Ellie. Uh, all right. So that will take us to item 32, which is Legis 74483, um, amending the, or Madison General Ordinances to Increase Alder Salaries and Associated Effective Dates. Uh, President Furman?
Adopt substitute.
Second.
Motion is to adopt the substitute, which you all, I hope, have. Uh, and it's been seconded. We'll start with questions for staff. Are there questions for staff on item 32? Being none, is there discussion on item 32? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, a few nights ago, we passed the mayor's 2023 budget. What still rings in my head are statements that came into us, like, I strongly oppose six police officers through the COPS grant. While this may not, while this may have no cost to us now, it will leave the city on the hook to pay for these officers in a short few years, at a time when the city will be dealing with large deficits. Committing new funds to an additional six police officers does not reflect our values. Again, committing new funds to an additional six officers does not reflect our values. The neighborhood presented a survey that showed 75% of the neighborhood would like more police office, police coverage than less. Whether you call it redirecting, re-imaging, reallocating, or other familiar themes, the goal is to take funds from police. These were quotes that were sent in from constituents. And if some of us did not want to invest in safe neighborhoods, safe communities, healthier neighborhoods, opportunities for youth, $4.5 million into the public market, I cannot be supporting this increase, because how does voting to give ourselves a raise support our values? This will probably pass, but it won't be because I voted for it, not because alders do not do the hard work. It is because I don't see how this support our values. I will not be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
Um, okay. I don't know how I ended up this high in the queue, but, uh, can you give me a second?
You can pass if you'd like to, Alder.
Yeah, just, yeah, come back to me.
Okay. Alder Benford?
Thank you, Mayor. And I apologize. I, I did have a question for staff, but, uh, my fat fingers, I couldn't hit the button. So if that ship has sailed, that's okay.
No, I, is there any objection to having a question for staff? There's no objection, Alder. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't know if there's anybody in HR, or perhaps a city attorney could answer my question. But, uh, the question is, is say that we pass this and an alder does not want to accept this pay raise. Is there a provision where the alder could return that money to the city?
Yes, Alder, state law does allow elected officials to return their salary.
Thank you. Maybe I can come back, Mayor, with comments.
Thank you, Alder. Um, all right. Alder Fair, you're next?
Thank you. I, I won't speak too long in this. I think if you were at Finance Committee, and then obviously the other night, you've heard my thoughts on this. Uh, and I actually don't think we have the votes, but maybe we will. Um, so I'll just run through a few of, of why I think you should consider voting this, voting on this. Um, first of all, I think it's the question of can we continue to attract a diverse, and, and when I say diverse, I don't just mean diverse, um, in racial makeup or demographic, like, those kind of demographics. Um, people who, you know, work different types of jobs, have different types of, of lived experiences. How are we going to continue to attract those people to run for this office when the wage is $13 an hour? And that is with our very kind of low conservative 20 hours per week estimate of what we work, uh, in this job, which is, by the way, $6 less than any other City of Madison employee makes. So how, does, does what we're being paid now help us attract, um, that kind of diverse makeup? And I guess I would argue it doesn't help. Um, and perhaps it hurts. My other, another argument that I would make is, I guess it's all around the same thing. We are professionals. Um, I know, we don't like to think of ourselves like that. We don't like to say that out loud, because to the public, it's a hard political thing to say, because we are servant leaders, right? And we are that. But we're also, we're doing a job to the best of our ability, um, working hard at it, putting our time, energy, and, um, mental energy into it. It's an emotionally tough job. We're coming off a week, I don't know about you, but I was drained on Friday. And I know a lot of other people, all kinds of other people in this world are drained after a long week. So I guess what I sort of think is, like, maybe we should, the, the council, I'll try not to say weeks, it's not about me and it's not about you, it's about the council as a body, should be at least paid somewhat equivalent to what other workers who work long weeks, um, get paid, uh, in this city. In addition, you know, I'm a big, um, believer that this council in all ways needs to be strengthened. And to me, this is one way of doing that, certainly not the only way. I would actually have loved, had we been able to pass the, um, or at least put on the referendum, the alder, uh, sorry, the term limit, my fault, let me slow down, the, um, three-year terms with alternate, um, sets of elections. I think that would have been, gone a long way to strengthen this council. So I think, if I'm not mistaken, and there's probably a few minor changes, I was gone for a couple of years, obviously. But as we sit here, we went through the two- or three-year process of TFOGS, or longer. And as I've said earlier in previous, uh, meetings, that, before that, there was discussion on that for years earlier. And as we sit here, I don't think we've made any major changes to government structure. And so I guess the question I put out is, when? Why? How? How are we going to do this? I've heard a lot of arguments about now is not the time. Um, we should do more public engagement. Um, you know, the, the community isn't ready for this. And I guess I just keep coming back in my head to like, okay, so when? When are we going to have leaders that are going to be willing to make a difficult vote and go to their constituents and make a difficult argument? There's definitely, we've seen the emails. There's going to be people who think you're just padding your own salaries, you're just doing this so you can run again with, for more money. And, you know, while the rest of us, all those arguments. And you're going to have to make the case. And I think you all could do it with integrity and do it with honesty, because I don't think anyone's sitting here thinking about themselves. I really don't think that. So I just ask, and I'll stop and let others in, there's a lot of people in the queue, you know, if not now, when, I guess, is, is a, a big concern of mine, or a big question I have. And I think that we should be asking ourselves that. And so this is probably not going to pass tonight, but who's committed to continue to, not continue to think about how we change the structure of our government, but really make some changes and be willing to take some tough votes and, and get us, um, to a place where we're strengthened and we're more efficient as a body and as a city. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, Mayor, what I have to say, uh, I'd like to address what our values are in regard to this issue of alder pay. And in so doing, if you forgive me, I'd like to point to scripture, the First Timothy, chapter 5, where the Apostle Paul says, "A laborer is worthy of their hire." Now, the wage that we're currently being paid as alders is $13.77. That is less than a living wage in the city of Madison. It is less than what many consider to be a fair minimum wage. And there is not a single employee in the city of Madison who gets paid currently less than, I believe, $19 an hour. So if we believe ethically, and as a matter of principle, that a laborer is worthy of their hire, then it's certainly appropriate for alders to be paid on an hourly basis at the rate of at least what the lowest-paid city employee receives. That is a valued judgment. Now, if you are of the opinion that what we do is purely community service and on the nature of a volunteer, as you've heard by Attorney Haas, you are certainly within your rights to return your salaries to the city and donate it. And in fact, you could put forth a resolution or ordinance change that alders get paid zero and make it an all volunteer position, if that's consistent with what you really believe. But I think deep down inside from an ethical value proposition, a laborer is indeed worthy of their hire. And if we do not place that as a priority, we will be excluding people from running for office. We will be reducing the amount of equitable representation from people of color who suffer already from a racial wage gap in this city. We will be excluding immigrants and people who are, uh, coming into this city with perhaps less than bountiful financial resources. We will be excluding other folks who, for whatever reason, are on the low end of the pay scale, because they cannot afford a part-time job that pays so poorly. We should, and the TFOGS recommendation, be thinking about opening up this body for broader and more fair and equitable representation. So I would suggest to all of you that this ordinance change is indeed consistent with our values, a values of fairness, values of equity, and an insistence, an insistence that a laborer is worthy of their hire. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry?
Um, and I'm going to apologize in advance. I am in a dance studio, uh, not watching my daughter's dance recital currently. So Chair, please feel to interrupt me if the background noise, um, gets to be too much. I have headphones in. Um, but nevertheless, as a supporting alder, co-sponsoring alder of the budget amendment that passed, as well as a co-sponsor of this, uh, ordinance change before us, um, I felt compelled to, to speak and kind of share. Um, I'm not going to belabor or over, um, message what I've heard so far. But, um, I understand that this measure is controversial and likely frustrating, frustrating, given the, the many emails we've received, um, the fact that we know that there are also servant leaders serving in our VCCs that aren't even compensated at all. But I think, um, as I went back and thought and processed about how, or if I would be supporting, um, these measures, I thought about when I decided to run. And fortunately enough, I was in a position of privilege enough to not have to think about, well, how much will I make? And will that be enough for me to maintain my livelihood? Um, I have heard from other alders, uh, whether that's current or former, that this job, um, everyone has gotten to it to honor their commitment to service. Um, I don't deny or doubt that of any of us or any previous alders. However, it is very frustrating to me that the narrative of those who have been in this seat isn't amplified, of people working multiple part-time jobs to piecemeal, just to be able to afford a roof over their homes as they advocate for others to, um, access the same basic need. Um, it's interesting, values have entered the conversation, because as a city value, I'm not as quick as alder Madison to pull up, um, the city, uh, mission. But I know that equity and inclusion is focal. It's a, there are terms that I think are used in every common council meeting, every city-related meeting. And so I actually, as a supporter, am okay if this doesn't pass tonight, because the conversation that generated from this is what needs to continue. Um, it's my hope that the emotions that have risen from this don't cease, and they push this conversation to continue, um, into finding amenable but innovative solutions that we can lend to capacity building within city infrastructure, period. Will increasing pay automatically increase capacity for alders? No. But it may help make a decision about not working a third shift job or picking up, you know, um, odd-hour work in order to be able to take care of families. As a, a previous alder mentioned, it's not even a family wage, just a family sustaining wage. I think that's the correct term. And interestingly enough, there was a lot of passionate, um, conversation and obviously passing of a, a wage equity, um, for city staff. And so I just implore you to think deeply, not about what is the favorable thing. Um, I thank and commend, uh, residents for sharing their thoughts on this point. Um, and in the responses I've generated, I've shared the same, but respectfully, until you've sat in this seat, you cannot fathom, uh, what we go through. Um, I'll give one short example. I'm sorry, I know I said I wouldn't belabor, but, um, recall hearing a resident being upset that a email had not been answered in two business days, and lamenting that they would be fired if something similar happens. And I think of an ER hospital room and triaging. I literally triaged my email. Um, it, it's a privilege to be able to check your email on the clock all the time, to be able to answer your phone whenever anyone calls. But I think the value of not having full-time alders was very clear. And in order to remain in this part-time role, it literally is triaging on top of showing up to what we're required to. So as our city grows and evolves, and we look towards ways to become more equitable and inclusive, I hope that everyone, regardless of their service as an elected official or not, comes to understand the expectation of the high-quality service of our elected officials, and that it is an equity issue. So I implore you to support this ordinance, uh, change, so that we can continue to diversify the voice of perspectives from socioeconomic, from ethnicity, from religion, from all of the things that lend into equity and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have a question for staff and a comment that I will do later. But my question for staff is that I'm looking at the substitute, the consistency of, of having the previous, it, current rate and future rate is not in, is not listed for the Vice President and the President. And I would hope that that would be included, just like it was listed for alder salary. Just so, to make it more consistent. And I don't know who wrote this up, but you can do that. And Mayor, can I roll right into my discussion, or do you want to come back?
Alder, let's see if the attorney wants to comment on your-
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Um, Alder, I'm not quite following. The, the language I'm looking at has an annual adjustment in each of the provisions.
Okay, I'm looking at the substitute. Is there another substitute on Legis Star?
Nope, just one substitute.
Okay, so it says, Council Vice President will receive a rate of 2054. What was the previous rate?
That's the, that's the rate in the substitute. And then after that, that has the language about the annual adjustment. Is that what you were referring to?
No, she's, she's wondering what the current rate, Alder. The, the current rate, I think, is not reflected in the ordinance.
Okay, well-
Anywhere. So that, so it, it makes up in that it is struck out, right? Because you're, you, the, the current rate was in the ordinance language. We are striking it and replacing it with the new language if this is adopted. And that is consistent amongst the different clauses.
I'm, okay, but it does say the alder salary- I'm okay, but it does say the alder salary from an effective hourly rate of thirteen seventy-seven will be increased, I'm jumping words, will be increased to nineteen oh four. So that's why I made that comment. Maybe there's another substitute.
Alder, you're talking about the fiscal note?
Yes.
Okay, now that we're all in the same place.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, okay, yes, I'm talking about the fiscal note. I apologize, Mayor.
So yes, you are correct that the previous rates for Council Vice President and Council President are not reflected in the fiscal note. But I think that's something that Finance could add without an issue.
Okay, you can come back to me for discussion.
Thank you, Alder.
Sorry about the confusion.
No worries, Alder. Alder Bennett?
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Thank you for giving me time, getting my thoughts together. I know that a lot of people, or y'all have not been talking about yourselves, but you know, I'm just going to be very transparent in the coming comments about why I'm voting for this, how this, like, I'm going to be very transparent that this job is hard to do without having income. And it's been really frustrating to see some of the comments made by other alders, Mayor, and I'm addressing you, where there's the sense of benevolence for being, and self-righteousness of being able to have the privilege to serve because you have the means, the financial means, I mean. And I just want to say that a lot of us are real human beings and we have real bills. Throughout my time as alder, I have, I received zero dollars family contribution. And I'm a full-time student. I've worked at least two jobs while working, while maintaining this job as alder. I've sacrificed basically every weekend for the past two years to work at Comrades on State Street from six PM until four AM. And then get up in the morning at nine AM to see texts from all of you all, which I love and to respond to. In January of this year, I received an eviction notice because it was my third month of being late on rent. And thankfully, I had friends and family that was able to help me catch up. But honestly, it's still very embarrassing to be someone that sits on Equal Opportunities Commission, to be someone that is sitting here fighting for housing rights and not have money to pay for my own housing. So I know it's not supposed to be personal, but don't we want people that are low-income, people that don't have the means to serve in these positions? People that are underserved and underprivileged to be able to serve as alder? How can we say we want those people to serve as alder and we're saying at the same time they don't deserve to have a livable wage? I know some people say that we are public servants and not career politicians, but I would argue that we are more than public servants. We are community members. This cohort came in as one of the most diverse councils in history, in Madison history. And we want to keep that, right? How can we say we want black and brown people to keep running for alder and simultaneously saying that these black and brown people that we want to run shouldn't receive a livable wage? As people of color, we should be tired of giving our labor to uplift our communities for pennies. We should be tired of sacrificing so much of going to meeting after meeting with frankly, white people making six figures for a job we do for them for free. Lately, I've been hearing a lot to put on your own oxygen mask before you can help anyone else. And I don't know how we expect any other future council members, the people that we want to be serving, to put on their oxygen masks if they don't have the financial means to do so. So this is a very easy vote for me. It's a very easy vote to at least give future alders the opportunity to receive a livable wage and continue to serve their community in this wonderful job.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Benford?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say, Mayor, that I'm a little heartbroken, heartbroken when, in my mind, I've heard this compared to jobs, this service. This is just me speaking, Mayor, my own personal thoughts. I would, when I hear this being stated as a job rather than service and compared to what city employees make, there's no city employee in Madison that has to go out and campaign for their job and have people go to the polls and elect them to their job. I know they have other processes to get hired. Mayor, to me, this isn't a job. I suspect we're all called to service for different reasons. Some of us, including me, I like politics. I, there is power around what we do. I hope you all know that. I hope I'm stating the obvious. There's a great deal of power that us twenty-one individuals have governing this city. Some people use this position as a way to hire office, as a stepping stone to another office. Some people really do have the sincere desire to serve and perhaps cultivate new leaders, new people to get engaged in public policy. Mayor, it's really, you know, hearing the conversation, it's not up for me to judge. That's up to the voters and they should judge and they will, they will after this conversation. I know it's a hard job. When I was elected in two thousand and three, not to have a pity party or compare who was most impoverished in their life. But when I was elected in two thousand and three, I did need three part-time jobs. I was a single father of four, caring for a dying mother. It's a hard job. We have long meetings. One of my colleagues is at a dance thing. All the times I think about I miss my children's events. And the meetings and the emotional toll and dealing with different personalities is always hard. It is very hard. I'm not complaining because I asked for it. I had precedent. I did this before. So I kind of knew what I was getting into. But it's a lot different in District Six than it was in District Twelve back in the day. So it is a hard job. But I want to say respectfully, Mayor, if it's too hard, if it's too much of a demand personally, if it's just too much, just step aside, step aside. It's a hard job. In some districts, maybe not as hard, but ultimately, that's up to the voters. It became hard for me my first time around, Mayor. You remember, you came in after me to represent District Twelve. I served two terms and I realized that it was too much, that the district would be better served by bringing in a new leader. And I stepped aside. It's hard sometimes, Mayor, I think, because this position, whether we want to admit it, maybe it's just my own observation. I'll leave it there. But it can be intoxicating. It can be intoxicating because we're at the table. I know you're all still hurting from last week's budget. We're at the table. We're making these decisions. Before I was an alder, I didn't know that. I didn't know what to expect. But once I became an alder and once you're playing the game, you, we have a great deal of privilege. We have a great deal of power. Sometimes, Mayor, I feel like as I hear these arguments, I hear that collectively or individually, we justify our worth, we justify our importance, we justify our value as public servants. Sometimes I think some of my colleagues, they work very, very hard and that's been the history of this city. Some alders work more than other alders. That's just the reality of it. Maybe they have privilege to do more. Maybe they have an expertise. Maybe they were involved before they became an alder. Some alders do put in more time. And I said it before, some districts demand that and other districts do not. And it feels at times that all alders are looking at all the hard work they put in and rightfully so. It's just human nature. And maybe they look around and this number, this twenty-point something hours that is expected to be put in. Maybe they look around and there's a little resentment because they're putting in all this work. But Mayor, once again, respectfully, that's none of our dang business. That's up to the voters. That's really up to the voters to decide if we're doing a good job. Now, throughout this conversation, this kind of bothers me and I want to say this carefully. I've heard the need for, that perhaps more money would increase more representation with BIPOC folks or just different diversity in general, that perhaps more money would do that. And I think, I said it before and it's a broken record, but you in the chamber, if you pause just one second over my words and look around, us on Zoom, we are the most diverse council. We are in the history of Madison. We didn't need any structural changes. We didn't need a pay raise to get us to where we're at now. It just happened. Perhaps it was the call of action from Mr. Floyd's Deft that started the summer of social justice that called a lot of BIPOC people to this office. I don't know. We all came for different reasons. But once again, there was no structural change. And I want to say this as delicately as I can that some of my white colleagues, that if you say that you want to ensure there's more BIPOC representation, that there's more historically marginalized people that have this opportunity, then step aside. Get the heck out of the way if you really believe that and make room. I also heard throughout this conversation that there's concern about turnover. If we don't pay people, we're going to have this massive turnover. And we've had a lot in my two years and in recent history. And you know what? This argument that we're losing all this institutional knowledge, that it weakens the body, I'm not buying it. I'm not buying it because I really believe that true political leaders, they take the time to reach back and instill in others the tools and skills they need to lead rather than hang on to these offices, especially locally. Years ago, I raised this issue and I had an alder that I greatly, greatly respect. He's no longer on this body. But he turned around after serving a couple decades as a white man and looked at me and said, what power? What are you talking about? We don't have power. And here we're sitting at a council meeting. And that wasn't lost on me as only the fifth black person ever elected in two thousand and three to this body. It hit me that perhaps some of us don't see that power and that privilege. I want to say that at the very, very least, Mayor, I think we should take this to referendum. Now, I've heard so much spin around the past referendum. I understand that the questions were prescribed. But to me, it almost sounds like some of us don't believe the voters know what the heck they're doing, that we are so much smarter than the voters. And talking about taking leadership, this isn't courageous. This isn't the way to do this. So coming off of last week, coming off the budget, saying no, saying no to Equal Opportunities Commission investigator, saying no to so many worthy causes. I find this, in my opinion, Mayor, morally shameful. I really do if I'm at the very least taking it to the voters. I don't have to say that with money polluting every level, every single level of our political system, money, money, it's become a job for so many elected officials, policymakers. They, and as I look at campaigns, how they skyrocketed since I first ran in two thousand and three, I think we're running down a slippery slope to really deal with consequences I don't think we fully understand here. So in closing, I just want to say, please, please, let's not do this right now. That if it's a hard job, serve the best that you can, reach back, try to find someone else. I think it's healthy for our local democracy. Once again, the institutional knowledge doesn't go away. Marsha Romo talks to me anytime I need advice. There's people on this body that's been very generous with advice. It's not rocket science. It really isn't. So I'm imploring you at this point, I know it's a struggle. I get it. It's really, really hard as I reflect back at all the things I sacrificed when I ran around my kids and my family. And the current money that we're making now, it goes a long way toward paying my rent. And I'm sorry that people are facing housing insecurity and it is a challenge. But please, use that as a reminder of why you should be here. All the voices that don't have that opportunity to be at the table with us tonight. Use that and never forget that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Paulson?
Yeah, so this one is definitely an issue where I have to check my privilege because I am fortunate to do this job with no financial considerations personally. I have the resources to do this and not worry at all about money. But I think that one of my duties, my duty is to the city. The office I took was to the city, but I also have a duty to this institute, to this body and to, and to future bodies and to do my best to make sure that future councils are in strong positions to continue to tackle the issues facing the city of Madison. As you know, I won't be a part of this body come next spring. So whatever we do on this is not going to affect me either way. So many of my colleagues, all of whom I respect very deeply, have made a pretty convincing case that the pay for this position should be significantly higher than what we're talking about. I was not comfortable with that. I thought that was too radical of a change to take our salary rate out into what a first-year teacher makes for a full-time job. I thought that was simply too far, too quick right now, given referendum results and just a big jump. But I appreciated many of the arguments for why that was appropriate. So I thought that this number, you know, that's based off a number that Alder Farah proposed and it came out of a spreadsheet that Alder Foster created, was a, was an acceptable compromise. And I actually had an amendment ready to go that Finance had worked on that I could have moved as well on Tuesday night or Wednesday night, remember we did this last week, that would have got us here as well. So I think I think I think that the next council, um, the next council members, um, I, I don't think it's realistic to assume that they can't do this with no money. Um, I don't think it's realistic to say that we should cut this down to zero. I think that money needs to be one of the resources that we provide um, our council members with. Um, and uh, we have not changed this dollar amount uh, for eight years. If we don't do this tonight, it will be 10 years. Um, most of us, if we took a poll, certainly would say that the minimum wage um, should be $15. Um, I don't see how we can't at least raise um, our salary to what we have for many years now said. Um, uh, should be, should be the minimum wage. Um, uh, and I think it's reasonable to go uh, somewhat past that. And so I think the $19 uh, mark is, is a, is a reasonable number uh, to pay uh, council members uh, for, for their service. And I think it's uh, hey, that I think we, we need to equip um, our council members with some funds. Um, should it be more? Probably. Is it the right time to go way more? I don't think so. Um, is this a um, acceptable change uh, for, for now? Yes. Um, if you're not willing to go to $19.04, I hope that you would consider offering an amendment for a different number. Um, if $19 is too much, what do you think about 18? What do you think about uh, 15? Um, I think that um, the salary, um, either if you're going to have a salary, um, it should, it should occasionally adjust up. We are at eight years. Um, and if we don't do this, we'll be at 10. Uh, and so I think it is time to adjust the salary. I think $19.04 uh, based off the minimum wage for the, the minimum hourly rate that we pay a Madison employee is a perfectly logical place to put that number. Um, if that number is not where you think it should go, um, uh, please propose a new one. But I don't think that we can say that the number should not change. I think it is time for this number to change. This is our last opportunity to change it uh, for the next two years. Um, so I think um, we should, we should take that tonight. We should raise the salary. Um, I would not support going any higher than 1904, uh, but I think we have to, I think we have to raise the salary. I think um, it's, it's um, we have to uh, uh, pay our future uh, pay this future body uh, um, some resources and it's time to increase the amount that we pay this body um, to make a, to make a modest adjustment. And, and so if you're not going to support 1904, I hope you will propose an amendment uh, for at least some type of raise uh, tonight. But I hope you don't say that, no, we shouldn't raise the uh, salary amount uh, at all. Uh, because I think we are, we clearly have to understand that there are, um, uh, that it's, that it's, that we do have to pay the alders something. Um, and uh, so yes, I hope you support this, but if you're not going to support this, please propose an alternative. Uh, because the status quo uh, should not continue for another two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I won't be supporting this as I've said before. But does more money mean more time? Because what I've heard is over the course, not enough time. And I do know that more money does not give you more time. It is wrong to assume that we are all privileged on whatever level privilege is. When you come into this chamber, you come to serve. That is what I did and that is what most of you have done. I can think of several things that we could implement that would ease the burden that you call a burden to give you more flexibility. And none of that is raising the salary or the hourly, I should say, for alders, especially at this time. It's not just the perception, but it's also the comparison. In most cases are a little bit insulting. If it takes two more years to be in a better situation economically, socially, to increase our salary, then let it be two more years. But what we are here to do, what we said we were going to do, what we believed we were going to do is to serve all the people in the city of Madison. I wrote down some notes from Alder Benford and Alder McKinney and Alder Tag and Alder Paulson. And I believe you believe in what you're saying. But I cannot believe that this is the right time. I cannot believe that this is the right thing to do. And, and I cannot believe that at this moment, as we struggle with that budget, um, things that we know should have passed. And if I want to go back to another budget, I would say there was things in that that should have passed and we know that that would have benefited the city of Madison and our outreach and our employees that did not pass. So tonight, I am going to join my other colleagues in voting no for item 32. 74483. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Um, Alder Abas, you were next.
Thank you so much. I think so a lot of points are being, uh, I don't want to repeat myself because I heard from Alder Benford, Alder Carter and from other uh, alders. I also do not believe uh, increasing this salary is going to improve any diversity. Uh, people run in this position out of passion. When I ran, I have no idea how much alderperson get made. I ran because I want to make a difference in people's life. And um, I think so I'm honored and proud the, the work we did in city of Madison. And also from process standpoint, I think so it's very important for the voters to decide. We did non-binary referendum. It came out. People told what they want. And also from workload standpoint, I just don't understand how increasing this will reduce your workload. You still need a day job. You still need to support your family. You still need to work. And if we're really serious about our workload and stuff, perhaps we need to see structural changes in a council office and more support, investing there and helping alders. Uh, I don't want, I don't want to deep down what type of those supports, supports look like because I have my own opinion and I think so it's important for the voters to make those decisions. Um, a couple of other things I will mention is um, uh, value. I heard a lot about today, uh, Madam Chair about value. Uh, I do remember half of this council voted against immigrant community at language connector position, Department of Civil Right, last council budget. Uh, thanks to the Madam Mayor for you for breaking the tie. Really appreciate that for the monk community, Chinese community and a lot of argument I heard that night was very painful. And some of the comments was, well, this will be $60,000 every year we have to pay. So I heard from my colleagues about they care about immigrants and I do believe in my heart, they do care about people of color and immigrant. But it's, it's hard for me to really, really think like when it comes for the action time, we decide not to invest those community because of budget constraint. Uh, we have, uh, like my own district, uh, there was a workforce development route, BRT, uh, that was taken away because of the ridership model. Those community members are suffering and they want an extra bus because right now the, under that model, the bus will be 75 minute. And nobody can get a ride at 75 minute. So if we want to increase that to 45 minute, we need half million dollars. This council during the last budget said, clearly said that message, we don't have money. And, and we, I don't want, you know, I don't, I feel like if I go back to my constituents, it's, it's a, it's a shame where we are. We we need to invest in communities and during, and we have a big budget deficit. And next couple of budgets will be extremely, extremely critical. And I do not see like increasing this to $19 is going to solve the issues we are facing as a council. I just do not see that happening. Uh, perhaps I'm missing something, but uh, I feel like we should invest in, in our council office and strengthen that and help alders with their workload. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So as always, I'm just going to start by going to the city's own values. So the city uh, says that uh, one of their values are equity, which is being committed to fairness, justice and equal outcomes for all. There is also the value around wellbeing, that we are committed to creating a community where all can thrive and feel safe. And there is my favorite, the shared prosperity. We are dedicated to creating a community where we are all able to achieve economic success and social mobility. And so a couple of things I wanted to just point out is that I'm definitely in support of um, item number 32 because it also gets at improving the health outcomes even of alders. And so the kind of logic that I've been hearing, whether, I'll just say the logic I've been hearing overall, I'm not sure if folks realize um, that is rooted in structural racism. And so to ask a person who is experiencing poverty to give of themselves so much so that they are at a great disadvantage is rooted in structural racism. So a couple of things I want to note is after the values, the city of Madison actually signed on to uh, declare racism as a public health crisis in Wisconsin. And so point two from the public, uh, our fine universities, population health institute, point two says racism is a social system with multiple dimensions. Individual racism is internalized or interpersonal and systemic racist, systemic racism is institutional or structural and is a system of structuring opportunity and assigning value based on the social interpretation of how one looks that unfairly disadvantages some individuals and communities unfairly advantages other individuals and communities and saps the strength of the whole society through the waste of human resources. And then the last three points say, uh, the third to last, Healthiest Wisconsin 2020 states that Wisconsin must address persistent disparities in health outcomes and the socioeconomic, educational and environmental inequities that contribute to them. Second to last point says, public health's responsibility to address racism include reshaping our discourse and agenda so that we all actively engage in racial justice work. The last point says, while there is no epidemiological definition of crisis, the health impact of racism clearly rises to the definition proposed by Galiyah. The problem must affect large numbers of people. It must threaten health over the long term and it must require the adoption of large scale solutions. Sometimes large scale solutions are often referred to as radical ideas. The last thing I want to share is back in 2019, Madison's common council um, passed a resolution. The substitute says, so file number 57483, substitute supporting the Wisconsin Public Health Association's campaign against racism and recognizing racism as a public health crisis. The title is supporting the Wisconsin Public Health Association campaign against racism and recognizing racism as a public health crisis. The sponsors included Alders Falde, um, at the time, um, uh, Alder Rhodes Conway, Badar, uh, Harrington McKinney, Abas Alboris, Carter, Evers, Foster, Furman, Heck, Henneck, Kimball, Lamer, Martin, Morland, Romo, Skidmore, Tierney and Verveer. And so a little bit from the note. It goes on, it kind of sort of reiterates what we just heard before, but we, the body also says, whereas race is a social construction with no biological basis. And it just goes on to talk about racism being a structural, you know, it's a social, racism is a social system with multiple dimensions. Individual racism is internalized or interpersonal. And I, I just, I also want to note it talks about how 100 studies have linked racism to work health, worse health outcomes. And then in Wisconsin, the highest excess death rates exist for African-American and Native Americans at every stage in the life course and of course for infant mortality. And so this council or not these present folks who are here today, but this council overall found that racism to be a public health crisis. But yet tonight we are saying someone who is experiencing poverty and is evidenced by Alder Bennett, when you are unable to pay your rent, you are experiencing poverty. But yet we are saying that a alder should just give of themselves, sort of donate theirselves to the degree that uh, they will incur a health crisis. To be evicted or face eviction is a public health crisis. I think overall, we're in agreement that overall, that is a public health crisis, but it seems to not be a public health crisis in this conversation. I'm a little confused on how that works. Um, so maybe someone after me will help me understand how that works. Um, the other thing I want to say is uh, I heard a, a couple of comments, whether they were in private conversations or in this, our discussions is that we didn't want to create career uh, politicians or career alders and that those kinds of statements too are rooted in structural racism. Uh, to a degree, we already have career politicians serving across the state, um, likely here as well. So again, I just want to reiterate that the city of Madison agreed that uh, racism is a public health crisis and individuals who serve on the common council cannot be seen and set aside from the public. They are doing a public good, but, and I have not found the reason yet, but I wanted to know why do alders receive some level of pay anyways? I'm going to make an assumption is that there was some idea about the pay being helpful to the alder overall. I don't, I can't determine if that's fact or fiction, but I would love to know that answer. Um, so again, I just want to say public health, we've already determined that racism is a public health issue or crisis and the mindset that one should give of themselves to the point where they're left at the end of the thing, um, just suffering, that's rooted in structural racism. So that's my piece.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Fair?
Thank you. Sorry, this is the second time I realized that. Um, just wanted to say, um, first of all, um, well, I guess I, this is what I want to say, Mayor. Um, I heard, or I didn't hear, what I did not hear from anybody is that this job is too hard. I didn't hear anybody say that. I heard people say it was hard, but no one was complaining that it was too hard. What I heard very simply, simply, all the other arguments, as flawed as I feel some may be, to me are noise. It's just about being paid for service. And I know that sound, that, that's hard for some people to hear, but being paid accordingly. And when we say accordingly, we're talking about up to $20,000, which is poverty salary, if that was your only salary. That's what we're talking about. I think a lot of the other arguments are about different values or different issues or different personality conflicts. I don't know. But we're talking about taking our salary from 13,000 to 20,000. Do we feel comfortable with that? Yes or no?
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Miazze, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I heard a lot of valuable points and I just wanted to point out three things. Three things that I would like to mention is, one, when I ran for alder, one of the things I, I did was I, one was my signs that I pulled up. My sign said Charles Miazze, voice of the people. So that's important because we had a referendum that actually we heard from the voices of the people that actually the people, that actually voted it down, voted against it. Second thing I want to say is that, as a person that goes around in this district to different food pantries, I just volunteered yesterday at the Lakeview River Food Pantry, and people are hurting. As we're going into this Thanksgiving holiday, people are out here hurting. I don't feel comfortable giving myself a raise right now, especially right now. You know, the third thing I want to like to say is that, you know, we just voted down some very good projects, like the River Food Pantry. And to me, voting down that, we're talking about giving ourselves a raise, we're expected to serve. And people, people are expecting us to serve. And that should be our, you know, that should respect, that should reflect our spending priorities. So, as much as I, what I heard tonight, I just can't, I have to, I have to vote this down. Send it back to the referendum, if we need to educate the public, to have a work, a work group in order to, before the referendum, let people know. But people have already spoken two years ago when they voted against this referendum. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. There's been a lot of strange reasoning shared by folks tonight, and it certainly feels like we're gearing up for campaign season with this topic. I want to just speak really simply to a couple of points that I've heard. One is, whether this is a job or not, I'm honestly trying not to laugh out loud, but I just don't even understand the rhetoric around this. This is obviously a job. All of our constituents expect us to do this job, they expect us to do it really well, they expect us to be professionals. I certainly expect it out of myself, I think all of us do. So this, this idea that it's not a job is just a little bit bizarre. This idea that voters should decide, and that they have already spoken also, I mean, we've talked about this already, and I'm just really honestly shocked to hear my colleagues pretend that the voters have said that they don't want Alders to raise the rate of pay for future Alders. They have never been asked that question, they've never answered that question, and as I've shared before, it would be completely inappropriate for us to start putting that to referendum. We set the pace rate for everybody in this city, including the mayor, including Alders, including city employees, we do it every single year with our budget. In this case, we have to do it also via ordinance. This is not a question to put out to voters for referendum, this is what they elected us to do, is to figure these things out and to take care of it. So this idea that they're going to somehow figure this out for us is just, it's not worth I remember the conversations that we had at CCC around a code of conduct, and really heard some strong words from some city employees around needing the Alders to lead by example. And that's really what this is for me. I've been looking a lot at wage inequity in the city, and all the talk about affordable housing, many other issues that we talk about. It's not actually about housing not being affordable, it's about people not having enough money to pay for their housing. And that comes from us paying some people in the city a very small amount of money, not enough money to live on. When we talk about a living wage, that's what we're talking about. And in Madison, Wisconsin, right now, this $19 is the floor of a living wage for one single adult working full-time without having to take care of anybody else. That $15, I would, I would not support anything lower than this number, talk of a $15, that's like from eight, nine years ago, people were talking about a $15 minimum wage. $15 is not a livable wage in Madison, Wisconsin today, for a person that can work full-time and only take care of themselves, let alone anybody that has a kid. When I looked into this, when I pulled that spreadsheet together, when I got the data from the city of Madison, I was prepared to see a salary for city employees that might be below that number, and I was as prepared to, to put forward a change to make sure that we paid every single city employee at least a living wage in the city. And I was actually thrilled when I got that report back from finance, and the lowest permanent wage in Madison at $19.04 basically is just above that threshold. I think we can do much better than that, and while we had some good conversations about wage parity, and the influence of being able to, to unionize or not, I'm also really, really interested in the study that will be coming out next year around our, our overall analysis on salaries. And I think there needs to be a lot of attention given to also looking at the low end of our pay of city employees, because $19.04 an hour is just that, it is the, it is the bare living wage, it is not a thriving wage, it doesn't mean you can go take a vacation. And for us, to set the example of paying Alders in the future $13 an hour, well below, well below a living wage in Madison, is not leading by example. And I, I think that's what we are being asked to do, and I think it's critical that we do set an example, that no one in this city should make less than that amount of money, that everybody that's putting the work in should be able to afford housing, and food, and transportation. And so that's what this is for me, honestly. It's not about how hard this job is, or how easy it is, not by whether you got this job by running a campaign, or filling out a, an application and going to an interview. This is a very different job than many other jobs in the city, but it's work, and deserves to be compensated at least at a living wage. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. There are people that are way more articulate than I am, that have made good points, but I do want to at least read out loud what the referendum that people keep referring to. I have done this in the past, and I will do it again. To be very clear, this is what was asked of the voters for a non-binding referendum. Madison currently has a part-time council, who are paid approximately $13,700 per year. The task force on government structure recommends that the city council, the city of Madison transition to a full-time council, common council. Should, beginning with 2023 spring election, should the city of Madison transition to a full-time common council, with each council member earning between 50% to 80% of the adjusted median income for Dane County for a single parent with two children, approximately $45,000 to $71,000 per year? Nowhere in there does it talk about what, what the currently hourly rate is, whether or not we should raise the hourly rate. It was very specifically focused on the TFOG's recommendation of full-time council. What was recommended in the original amendment was lower, pay-wise, than this adjusted median income for Dane County for a single parent with two children, and this 1904 is way lower than what TFOG's talked about. So I think, you know, this idea repeatedly where we're reading into what people meant, let's be very clear, this question was about whether or not we wanted a full-time council. The debate surrounded the, very much the full-time council. We are not increasing the amount of hours, even though I do believe many Alders are working more than 20 hours a week, and we are not advocating at this point for a full-time council. I hope future councils do advocate for that, but that's not what's happening here. So it's really, really tiresome for people to keep making up what voters voted for, and to really make a determination based on that snapshot in time, and say, no, we shouldn't pay Alders a, a, a living wage, or a better wage than what we're paying them now. I said it before, and I'll say it again, not increasing the rate is gatekeeping, it's Alders saying, we don't want other people doing this job. We want to be able to continue to do this job because we're privileged, and we're not interested in making this more accessible for others, and I think that's a huge mistake.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miazze for the second time?
Mayor, yeah, and that will be the last time. I just wanted to make sure that people understand that when we, as, as, as a diverse community decided to run, it was not about the pay. I didn't even know how much it was, you know, as far as getting paid. It was about serving the people and listening to the people, and it's not about campaigning. This is really about what we agreed to do when we signed on, and to actually see that, to go from supposedly $13 an hour to what was proposed, first of all, $30, $39, or $36 an hour, only almost three times as much. I mean, that was, that is ridiculous, given that where we're at with inflation, with people out here suffering. So that's the reason, has nothing to do with campaigning. It's about listening to what your values is, and that's my values as far as why I ran, and so it's not about campaigning at all. So thank you, that was my final time speaking about that, but I want to be clear, when we talk about people coming to the table, especially African-American, or, or any other race, it's about wanting to serve. I've served on plenty of committees and plenty other things, and it's not about the money at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Paulson for the second time?
Yeah, I wanted to thank my colleague who, who read the referendum text. You know, that number was kicking around in my head. Yes, the exact question wasn't answered, wasn't, the exact question and the exact numbers were a little bit different, but it did, when the initial proposal came out, I looked at that and thought, that's a little too close to the number that we had already had a debate with the community not too long ago. Not a, not as great a debate as we might have wanted, but, you know, we put the question out and, and got an answer. And even the second iteration earlier at, at Finance Committee, still felt a little too high and perhaps a little too close. I think the number at $19.04 is a, is a very good compromise, and is very far, very, very, very far from what we asked, asked with the voters, and I think it is appropriate, given the time length since the last change, that we make a change to this number. This is a, a modest number, this is in line with the base rate for, for the city, which is a fine place for the Alders to be. If we were to say, what should the Alders be paid? If we said it's the, the same amount as the lowest-paid city employee, I think that is a perfectly fine statement to make and defensible. But it is time to change this rate. It is time to give a future council the opportunity to jump forward so they do not have to have this debate again in two years, when it is even more painful and even more stressful to have fallen even farther behind. So I think it is time to move this number, I hope we move this number. I hope, I hope we make this change for the future council, and I urge you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney for the second time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm speaking for the second time because there seems to be an assumption that those among us are privileged. And I want to beg the difference, because when I first ran for this office, I did not even know that we got paid. I ran for the office because I wanted to serve my community, public service is why I ran. And, and just as my fellow Alder read the referendum, I'm going to, and I'm going to reference TFOG. We have not reduced the number of boards, committees, and commissions, and I have had the privilege to serve on committees where chairs, they are so committed to making Madison a thriving place. I am so blessed on the committees that I served on, and they do not receive any compensation. I mention that because when we're talking about wage parity, and we are talking about structural deficit, and that's all I heard. Personally, I need to say that when I served on the early, early, served on the council, is that my house was in foreclosure. And so, so those of us who make that commitment, it was a commitment to serve. It was hard, so I can relate to what you're saying, to the assumption is that none of us have been there, right? And so, and so I, I want to address what the issue is, is that do we work and make a commitment to serve the city of Madison? Yes, we do. And the, the raise now is not the issue. The issue is, is that we have been looking at where the city is, and as some of the Alders have said, that we have turned down some very worthwhile initiatives that we should have funded, but we were looking at their levy limit, and we could not fund those, of those initiatives. And for such a time as this, to put forth an amendment to give ourselves a raise, it just does not fit well with me. And so some of the Alders have said, if not now, when? But, but for me, it is not now. And the example is, is that for all that we're facing, for us to give ourselves a raise, and even the, the employees, I mean, when we, when we're putting more and asking more for our staff to do, I mean, they deserve the raise, and we had to spend time, you know, negotiating back and forth whether that would happen or not. And so now we sit privileged to give ourselves a raise, and I just cannot do that in good conscience, to vote for us to give a raise at this time. So I will not be supporting it, and I don't feel guilty about not supporting it.
Alder? Alder Bennett, you are next. For the second time?
For the second time, hopefully the last time. Maybe us Alders have more in common than we think. I kind of wanted to respond to just some things. One, for, just speaking personally, I know I would be able to do a much better job as this, in this job, I think I do a pretty okay job, but I think, I, I know I would be able to do a better job if I didn't have to pay, if I didn't have to spend time working two and three jobs. And I, I know for a fact that this raise will help at least pay for food, because this job pays for housing right now, it'd be nice if I had money to pay for food too. But that's just on a me note, some Alders are saying, if you don't, if it's too hard, then step aside, and again, it just sounds so benevolent to say that. I've been going through this process for the, like, the past year of recruiting people to run for Alder, and some of the people that I've talked to are like, oh yeah, you know, it would be nice, I'm sure you get compensated well too. And I was like, yeah, no, we don't actually. We make like, we make only $500 a week, or no, no, $500 every two weeks, $1,000 a month. And they're like, oh really? That's how much you get paid? Yeah. They're like, man, you know, I hear these people, that would be really, really good Alders, that are already overextended themselves and say, I can't do it, I have too much going on. And it's really sad to see on the streets, people that would be really good Alders, that can't run, because they're already overextended. And I just want to say that for any Alder that believes that this is, that this is not about, well, I'm, I'm addressing this to the chair, I encourage that any Alder that says this is not about money, to donate their salary back to the city. Because if this is not about money, that's what, $13,000 more we'll have to pay for community services. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter for the second time?
Call the question and roll call.
Alder, there's only one Alder left in the queue.
Okay.
Alder figure out call?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so. Okay, so before the council, before I started on the council, I had a very demanding and stressful corporate job, with great benefits and decent wages. I often worked ten, twelve hours a day, but every Wednesday, I took a break from work, family, and friends. I used to tell my coworkers, my husband and my child, do not bother me from six to nine. That was my me time. Every Wednesday, I spent time with friends of State Street, of the State Street families, pulling our wagons up and down State Street, packed with food, clothing, and first aid essentials. We distributed supplies to people living on the streets. We paused to have actual conversations, to gain their trust, and to offer them information about resources. I looked forward to every Wednesday as a way to re-center and to recharge my spirits. Every Sunday, you will have, you will have found me at the Beacon from eight to twelve, checking people in, helping with laundry, sorting donations, and serving meals. On Saturday month, one Saturday a month, our Wisconsian group made of family and friends coordinated a hot meal with fresh food and baked goods. And before council, I had time to spend time with my family and friends. To serve this population, I didn't have to prepare to complete my tasks, other than prepping the wagon. I didn't have to read forty-page agendas every other week. I didn't have to prepare for hours to participate in committee meetings, neighborhood associations, NRTs. I didn't have to crunch data, research every decision in front of me, countless hours of discussion with staff, learning complex issues, meeting with community members, answering emails. The budget alone was easily two months of prepping, working on amendments, expanding my reach to collaborate with the county agencies and supervisors. My volunteering service is my personal business. I don't tend to share those actions, nor do I expect recognition. I am sharing it tonight because there is a clear distinction between volunteering and doing this job. This is not a volunteer job. Today, I still have a very demanding job, a very demanding council job. I don't have time for a walk up down State Street or the Beacon. There's no time for family or friends, and I'm personally okay with that situation. I'm sharing this experience because my life is easy and privileged. I have a full-time job, amazing health insurance, good pay. I don't need a second or third job to sustain my household. I don't need this salary. I don't need to split my time among so many responsibilities. I have an adult son that I no longer support. I'm responsible for just my husband and I. And a few months ago, I even paid my mortgage, ahead of the thirty-year long-term situation. So I am very, I am in a very privileged position. Doing this job should not be reserved for people in my situation, someone established, someone with the means to dedicate time to the job. The city deserves attention and time, instead of having to split time among two, three extra jobs. I want people with life experiences to be able to sit on this chair to fight for issues they are passionate about, like transportation on the north side, or transportation on the allied, housing, and health issues. This change is not about me, but about the values this council represents. From a personal perspective, when I took this role, I thought this was a volunteer job. Again, I have a full salary. I didn't know that there was a stipend assigned. I was willing to volunteer the time to do the job, the task, whatever you want to call it. I was that committed, and I am still committed. I love the job I'm doing. I'm proud of all the things we have accomplished. It has been a privilege to serve the past eighteen months, regardless of all the hours I have, it has taken away from everything else. But when I realized that I was getting paid thirteen dollars an hour, to be honest, I was quite insulted. Is that how much my time is valued? This is not the way to bring life experiences to these chambers. This is not the way to level the playing field, to provide equitable access to these twenty seats. Many people want to serve. Not having access to a supplementary salary should not be a deterrent to service. So, again, like many have already spoken, I, at the minimum, if you are not in agreement with the dollar amount, propose something else. But take the opportunity today to actually make a change, and don't think of yourself. Just think again on the people that will be filling these chairs after you're no longer able to do it, or you are tired of doing it. That's all we are asking for, to bring to the council an equitable pay, to allow more, to allow new people with life experiences to be able to sit on these, to take these positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. No other alders in the queue. So, on item thirty-two, it's been moved and seconded, the substitute. This is a fifteen-vote item. It requires fifteen votes to pass. So all those in favor of item thirty-two, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Miazze?
No.
No? Alder Paulson?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Ferr?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Tischler?
No.
No? Alder Revere?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Vittivier?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Weheli?
No.
No? Alder Abbas?
No.
No? Alder Benford?
No.
No? Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Carter?
No.
No? Vice President Curry?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Figarrela Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Foster?
Aye.
Aye. President Furman?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
No? Alder Heck?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Madison?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I have twelve ayes and seven noes.
With twelve ayes and seven noes, that vote fails to make the required fifteen-vote mark, and so the item fails. This is the last item that we have separated for tonight. Are there any introductions from the floor? I should say, additional introductions from the floor? Seeing none. Alder Miazze, it's your turn. Alder Miazze? Did you wish to move adjournment?
Oh, yeah. I wish to move adjournment.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Alder Harrington McKinney?
I was just counting the votes. I was one short. I'm sorry.
Okay. You can check with the clerk afterwards, Alder. All right. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.